Call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, June 3rd, 2013. Would you all please rise for a beef and vocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight as the city council meets in regular business, we are ever mindful of the many issues of service, community service, and volunteerism and support for our community that shower upon our community throughout the year. And tonight, we are very, very fortunate and appreciative that we are able to recognize several people from our community who have stepped forward on moments of challenge and also moments of need on behalf of the Batavia community. And we are thankful for their service and for all Batavians who are so willing to come up to the front of the class and take over a situation and turn Batavia's issues into something that we can all be very, very proud of. So, we are very thankful tonight for all those citizens who are so willing to become involved. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask for a special blessing to be showered upon them and all those who serve with them from throughout the United States as they serve so honorably in defending our liberties throughout the globe. Tonight, we ask for guidance and understanding and vision as we act on the issues before the city council. And we do so knowing that each and every one of us is here solely to represent the best interests of the community and in the future of our town and the days ahead. We ask for all these blessings. I'm in. Alderman Callahan, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk, please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
ATAC.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Alderman Chansit is absent. Wolf.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Holman.
Here.
Sam.
Here.
Vasiliyan.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
The record reflects that thirteen of the fourteen elected members of the city council are present in accounting for so we obviously have the necessary qualms to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two changes to be made. The first change will be item fifteen A will be a Class F liquor license to the city of Batavia for the Batavia Triathlon. And the second is fifteen B will be a Class F liquor license for the Batavia Fireworks Committee. My move, we pass the agenda as amended.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll on the agenda as amended.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the agenda as amended is approved, thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Moving then to item number five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
Thank you. Consent agenda reads as follows. For approvals, item A, May 24th, 2013, payroll, an amount of $703,198.09. Item B, the May 31st, 2013, payables, the amount of $829,875.36. C, the city council minutes for May 6th, 2013. D, ordinance 13-22, amending Title VII, Chapter II of the Minutes book code related to forestry. E, Resolution 1358-R, authorizing execution of Task Order Number One with LNS Electric for main substation maintenance and testing. F, Resolution 13-73-R, authorizing execution of master services agreement with LNS Electric. G, Resolution 13-74-R, declaring a parcel of Lane and Homestead surplus and no longer necessary for renuncible purposes. Item H, Resolution 13-75-R, approving a bond record keeping policy for the city of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage Counties, Illinois. Item I, Resolution 13-77-R, authorizing change order number two, lead and bus work installation of Cherry Park Substation project, the amount of $33,833. Item J, Resolution 13-79-R, accept grant of dedication for Wilson Street/Batavia Avenue intersection. Item K, approval, the Winmow City Festival carnival permit and waive the fees. I move we accept the consent agendas read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Clark for the approval of the consent agendas presented. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, moving to item number six, which is an appointment. This is the reappointment of Sarah Harms of South Forest Avenue to serve another term as a member of the Batavia Plan Commission. Mrs. Harms has served for the past, I believe, five years on the Plan Commission, very ably and is a great attender and participant. And I am asking for your confirmation of my reappointment to her for another term. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Stark. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion approved, thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, for the next couple, I'm going to first ask Fire Chief Deike if you would come forward and join me on the podium and will maybe would like to begin explaining what we're here tonight for as far as the proclamation.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Tonight, I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of two individuals who had a life-saving impact on a Batavia resident. If Jim Williams and Tim Ozan could come forward. Earlier this year, a Batavia resident collapsed in his yard and stopped breathing. Two of his friends, Jim Williams and Tim Ozan, both from Batavia, called 911 and started CPR. Police officers Tony Graham and Emo Jensen were the first to arrive on the scene. They were equipped with an automatic electronic defibrillator, an AED. They applied the AED to the patient and followed the directions and delivered one shock. The fire department then arrived with Battalion Chief White, Lieutenant Suwinski, and paramedics Kevin Salava, Chris LaFleur, Christina Stock, and Andrew Saxer. They continued to treat the patient until they arrived at the hospital. By the time they arrived at the hospital, the patient was awake and talking to the paramedics. The actions of all the parties involved contributed to a successful outcome. But all too often, one critical link in the chain of events necessary to bring someone back from a cardiac arrest is missing, and that link is usually bystander CPR. Early recognition and the use of CPR and AEDs is the critical link that greatly increases the chance of survival. The fire department has requested a proclamation from the mayor recognizing the actions of Jim Williams and Tim Ozan this day. And it should be noted that Jim is also a paid-on-call firefighter with the department. He was off duty at the time, and tonight he is on duty. Both individuals played important roles in providing the time necessary to get an AED on the scene and in use. The CPR that they performed, along with the actions of the police department and the fire department, played integral roles in saving that person's life that day.
I've asked Alderman Wolf, as Chairman of City Services, if he'd read the proclamation that we're going to ask you to pass.
Thank you, Your Honor. A proclamation recognizing Jim Williams and Tim Ozan for actions taken to save the life of a Batavia resident. Whereas on May 4th, 2013, at approximately 9:30 a.m., Batavia residents stopped breathing and went into cardiac arrest. And whereas Jim Williams and Tim Ozan, having been trained in CPR, recognizing the severity of the situation, called 911 and began to perform CPR, one doing compressions and the other doing ventilations. And whereas the Batavia Police Department arrived with the automatic electronic defibrillator that was used to defibrillate the person and was eventually successful in reviving the person. And whereas the Batavia Fire Department arrived with paramedics and firefighters to further treat the person who eventually transported him to the hospital. And whereas, all were truly instrumental in creating the life-saving links necessary to save the life of a Batavia resident. Now therefore, it is proclaimed this third day of June, 2013, by Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, that the citizens of Batavia express their sincere gratitude and warm appreciation to Jim Williams and Tim Ozan for all you did to help and assist your neighbor in need.
Motion.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Wolf, second by Brown for the approval of the proclamation. Clerk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion approved, thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay, for the next couple, I'm going to first ask Fire Chief Deike if you would come forward and join me on the podium and will maybe would like to begin explaining what we're here tonight for as far as the proclamation.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Tonight, I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of two individuals who had a life-saving impact on a Batavia resident. If Jim Williams and Tim Ozan could come forward. Earlier this year, a Batavia resident collapsed in his yard and stopped breathing. Two of his friends, Jim Williams and Tim Ozan, both from Batavia, called 911 and started CPR. Police officers Tony Graham and Emo Jensen were the first to arrive on the scene. They were equipped with an automatic electronic defibrillator, an AED. They applied the AED to the patient and followed the directions and delivered one shock. The fire department then arrived with Battalion Chief White, Lieutenant Suwinski, and paramedics Kevin Salava, Chris LaFleur, Christina Stock, and Andrew Saxer. They continued to treat the patient until they arrived at the hospital. By the time they arrived at the hospital, the patient was awake and talking to the paramedics. The actions of all the parties involved contributed to a successful outcome. But all too often, one critical link in the chain of events necessary to bring someone back from a cardiac arrest is missing, and that link is usually bystander CPR. Early recognition and the use of CPR and AEDs is the critical link that greatly increases the chance of survival. The fire department has requested a proclamation from the mayor recognizing the actions of Jim Williams and Tim Ozan this day. And it should be noted that Jim is also a paid-on-call firefighter with the department. He was off-duty at the time, and tonight he is on-duty. Both individuals played important roles in providing the time necessary to get an AED on the scene and in use. The CPR that they performed, along with the actions of the police department and the fire department, played integral roles in saving that person's life that day.
I've asked Alderman Wolf, as Chairman of City Services, if he'd read the proclamation that we're going to ask you to pass.
Thank you, Your Honor. A proclamation recognizing Jim Williams and Tim Ozan for actions taken to save the life of a Batavia resident. Whereas on May 4th, 2013, at approximately 9:30 a.m., Batavia residents stopped breathing and went into cardiac arrest. And whereas Jim Williams and Tim Ozan, having been trained in CPR, recognizing the severity of the situation, called 911 and began to perform CPR, one doing compressions and the other doing ventilations. And whereas the Batavia Police Department arrived with the automatic electronic defibrillator that was used to defibrillate the person and was eventually successful in reviving the person. And whereas the Batavia Fire Department arrived with paramedics and firefighters to further treat the person who eventually transported him to the hospital. And whereas, all were truly instrumental in creating the life-saving links necessary to save the life of a Batavia resident. Now therefore, it is proclaimed this third day of June, 2013, by Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, that the citizens of Batavia express their sincere gratitude and warm appreciation to Jim Williams and Tim Ozan for all you did to help and assist your neighbor in need.
Motion.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Wolf, second by Brown for the approval of the proclamation. Clerk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion approved, thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Chief Shira, we had some police support in this, too, didn't we? You want to tell us about that?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Chief Deike adequately summarized it, but two of our officers, as Chief Deike had mentioned, were instrumental in contributing to saving this resident's life with the automatic external defibrillator. And one of the officers here tonight, Officer Emo Jensen, Emo, if you can stand, be recognized. And Officer Tony Grammy unfortunately could not make it. I did present, I gave a copy to the city council, mayor and city council. I did present both Officer Jensen and Officer Grammy the department's life-saving award. And I might add that it's Emo's second time in receiving that award. Thank you.
So this is one of those moments that could have been a very sad moment, and it turned into something that speaks well to the talent that services the community of Batavia 24 hours a day. And I think we all should take great appreciation and comfort in the fact that we have such highly-trained and talented people who can, at literally a moment's notice, step forward and save a life. So, I just want to publicly acknowledge that. Gentlemen, I have copies of the proclamation we just passed here for you, so I would like to give you two copies of them. Do you want to say anything while I'm saying this?
Just really glad that John's still alive. We all went to college together around Colorado, and we did mountain rescue, and it'd be sad to not have him here tonight.
Thank you very much. And John, I have to say, Batavia wouldn't be the same without you.
Alderman Callahan, could you come up and maybe do a brief presentation about the next recognition we're going to do?
Thank you, Your Honor. As Susan has, Alderman Stark has reminded us throughout the course of this year, and our fireworks chairman, Mark Davis, the fireworks has greatly needed community support financially this year. And I couldn't be prouder tonight than two of our youngest members of our community decided to, on their own, a first grader and a second grader brother and sister, decided to get together and with the assistance of Dr. Wright at Alice Gustafson Elementary, decided to creatively run a fundraiser between the classes. Little healthy competition. And as a result of it, the school raised $700. And after that, one of the Rempert's cousins then took it upon himself, he was so inspired, to go out and raise another $100 himself just by going through his neighborhood. So, I would just like to thank them.
And the city council has a proclamation. I had asked Alderman Sparks, as Governmental Services Chairman, who normally reads the proclamations, if he would read that one, please.
Okay, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the youth of Batavia are the future of the community, our country, and the world. And whereas community involvement has long been an important value to the city of Batavia and cherished events such as Winmow City Fest, the Loyalty Day Parade, art in your eye are the results of initiation by and the continued support of citizens dedicated to make long-lasting positive impacts to our community. And whereas, in particular, the gathering together to witness the Fourth of July fireworks is the largest assembly of the community each year and is an occasion for the community to show its hospitality to many others from the surrounding areas. And whereas, more importantly, the fireworks and associated sky concert is a method by which people of all ages can come together to not only marvel at the beauty of what man can create in music and pyrotechnics, but to enjoy the freedom we have in this country and for our city to come together and celebrate our nation's birthday. And whereas Rachel Rempert and Matthew Rempert, both students at Alice Gustafson School, heard the request for financial support for the fireworks program this year, and in the tradition of community involvement, believe that they should and could make a difference. And with the assistance of their principal, Dr. Jan Wright, and their fellow Alice Gustafson Elementary classmates, creatively raised donations in the amount of $800 for the show. And whereas, beyond the monetary impact of their actions, other members of our community were spurred to also contribute, contribute and work for continuation of this important event. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, by the signing of this official proclamation, do hereby commend and congratulate Rachel Rempert and Matthew Rempert for their fundraising initiative. Sign Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. Move we accept the proclamation as read.
Second. Motion, and second, the clerk, call the roll, please.
And before I call the roll, I'd like to note that Alderman Chansit has entered the chamber. So, we have fourteen of fourteen. Alderman present. Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansit.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Motion approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Dr. Wright, who is the principal of Gustafson School, is here. Would you come forward, too, as long as we've got such great support between this school district and the fireworks committee in the city? We want to show all our room, we have all these photographers here. If you guys want to get closer pictures, you don't have to stand in there. Come on over here.
Your Honor, while we have everybody here, including Dr. Wright, I'd like to issue a little bit of a challenge for Dr. Wright to take back to the school district, the board office, and maybe get the schools, grade schools, to go against each other. As for next year, I've talked to the people from the fireworks. I think it would be a great idea to have the schools compete in a fundraising drive between the sixth grade or the elementary schools. And then the winner, whichever school or whichever class raises the most, gets front-row seats for the fireworks. Very good. All right, now it's Don Murphy's turn. This time, I'm going to give the mayor an award. My name is Don Murphy. I've been to Winston Lane, taken forty-two years. And...
Speaking of the mic. Got to use the mic.
Sorry, I could get to the mic here. On behalf of Batavia Lions Club, we voted just this last week to give the citation to Mayor Jeff Shelkey. For twenty years of service of coming to our meetings and giving us information about Batavia, historical, everything else, and we really appreciate it and his support of all our activities as well. On behalf of our group, this is the certificate. Thank you very much. Let me just say that they ask me to come every year. It's become an annual event. And I'll tell you what, I turn it into a, you know, hit on them for various contributions or support various activities in the community. So, this is truly a give and take. They get me talking for a while, but I also get them to do something on behalf of the community. So, it's a great exchange of information, and we've, I think, accomplished some pretty memorable things over the years. I appreciate all you, the Lions Club does to support Batavia and the surrounding community.
Thank you. As President, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And next, I'm going to introduce Chief Shira, who is going to introduce our next presentation, which is item 10, the victim services. Our battery ran low. Does it work in there?
I thought it would be a benefit for the, excuse me, why I put it in my business. Chief, could we switch mics with the other one? Because Alan does not sound well.
I'm sorry, it's not on, you say?
No, we'll switch mics. Thank you.
I thought this would be a good opportunity to refresh the memories of those people that have been on the council for a while and explain to the new alderpersons a service that we have that's a clear benefit to our residents. Back about 2007, not about, but in 2007, the police department especially, and to a certain extent, the fire department, recognized that many calls we go to, we simply are band-aiding the problem. We're really not solving the problem. It's a larger societal problem. It's something that we neither have the time nor the expertise to really get at the root of the problem and solve. So therefore, there's repeat calls for service at the same residents dealing with the same problem, whether it be the domestic, whether my children are out of control, whether substance abuse issues, homelessness, anger management issues. And so, we had some discussions about it, and we did learn that Aurora was contracting with the service that was very, very successful, called the Association for Individual Development. So, in 2007, it was made a budgeted item that is a service added. It comes out of the police department. And in 2007, we contracted with AID, and specifically Joanne Furnas, who's the Director of Crisis Services, to render these services for the citizens of Batavia. It has been, in my opinion, it's been a godsend. It's really been very, very helpful as far as the police department's concerned and the fire department. And more importantly, it's really solved the problems of some of the residents in Batavia. And if it couldn't be solved at the time, otherwise it was a referral to the proper agency that has the expertise to try to deal with it. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Joanne Furnas, the Director of Crisis Services for aid.
Well, he said it all, so I'm done. It's been a great evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight to talk about victim services. And it did start in 2007, but I also would like to give some credit to Alderman Garren Sparks. He and his lovely wife were over having dinner with me and my husband in 2006, and I was telling him about this crazy job that I had. That's 24/7, where we get called out in the middle of the night and weekends and holidays, and we go out for fatal car accidents and suicides, and when people aren't getting along with each other, and when neighbors are fighting with each other, and when people are having problems with their teenagers. And we refer to our cell phones as our bat phones, and when the bat signal goes up, we respond and we go out. And I could actually see some wheels turning. There are wheels that do turn, and I did see them in Garren, and he went, "Oh, my gosh, you know, would you talk to the people in Batavia about this?" And it's been a wonderful collaboration between AID and with Batavia. And I would say this, even with all the other communities that we serve, which I'll list in a slide later on, that Batavia got it right away. In Aurora, where we first started in 2005, it was one of those, I'd see something in the paper and I'd go, "Why didn't you call us out? You know, we could have helped for that." We met with the police officers. We went to every single shift, did a very short presentation, told them what we were all about, how to contact us, and we were immediately contacted and had a lot of different cases. So, why do we have victim services? I always say this slide is really, gives a good reason why. When people are in crises themselves, they often cannot come up with good solutions on their own. If you see these individuals in the boat, yeah, the people in the back are doing a good job keeping the people in the front warm, but eventually, what's going to happen? So, when we meet with families after a crisis or a trauma, this is a lot of times what we find, is that they really aren't looking at something clearly. So that pebble kind of rippled out farther and farther and farther again, where often, we may get a case and you're thinking, oh, maybe there's one person, you know, persons, one, two people, and all of a sudden, we're dealing with a cast of thousands. This is the number of cases, and it really, it fluctuates. My particular boss at AID, I always get kind of amused because she doesn't work with crises a lot, where she'll go, so how many cases or how many crisis people are you going to help next year? And I'll go, okay, let me put on my, my clairvoyant beanie. You, you know, you never know what's going to happen with that. So as you can see, you know, the calls have increased 2007, you know, the, the program was getting off the ground. Right now, we're pretty much on target to be right in the eighties again, because that 2013 number of cases is January through May, and then we've assisted 88 people. How are we funded? We have grants, and also through the individual communities we serve. Just like Chief Shira said, we started off in Aurora, we then branched out to North Aurora, then Batavia, and then we now have contracts with Lombard, St. Charles, and Sugar Grove Fire Department. And as of last weekend, we started a contract with Geneva, and that was actually from a referral from Chief Shira of saying, hey, this is a really good program, you should hear about it, and it would be something that would serve your community well. Batavia's contribution is $15,000, and I always say, you get a big bang for your buck. I have four staff, two of them who are bilingual. We all work 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There's always somebody that's on call. There's always somebody that's going to respond. We have a 30-minute response time. And so, it's one of those, if you were just employing one social worker for a 40-hour time span with a salary and benefits, you would be looking at a minimum of 80,000 to 85,000 a year. And so, for 15,000, you're getting somebody 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that's it. Questions or comments?
Questions or comments? Your Honor. Homer Wolf.
I'd like to comment, because I think that this not only is a great service for the people that are in the situations that you have to deal with, but I think it also takes a big load off of the officers and the firemen that are there, not having to try to force themselves into a situation where a trained professional does, to me, such a better job of that. Not that they don't do a good job, but that they don't have to add that to their already taxed job that they're doing every day. So I really think that that also benefits our staff to a great degree, and I know they do a great job.
Thank you. The other thing, and you're right, it's a very good PR tool for the city, because I can't tell you how many times when we've gone into somebody's home, and they'll reflect back on either the officer or the fireman or their paramedic and say, wow, I can't believe that he or she cared enough to call you out to help. And so, it is reflected back onto that other individual, which I think is also a good bang for your buck.
Yeah, I just want to say, and kind of back up what's already been said here, I've had numerous people contact me kind of after the fact where AID's response team has come into Batavia and handled the situation. And repeatedly, it's, I've never had a complaint about them, all I've had is compliments about what a truly heartfelt and outstanding job they do in trying to rectify some really convoluted, many times very problematic situations. And so, I would tell you that of the money we budget in our budgets, and we go through this every year, this is some of the most well-spent money that the city of Batavia puts on the, on the table. And, you know, you would hope that circumstances in the community wouldn't continue to run at the volume of things that need this, that, that does, but it seems like, this doesn't seem to get any lesser. Joanne and her crew are seemingly in here more and more than, with the passage of time, and every time they show up, they do a yeoman's job. So I just want to publicly thank you, and thank you for your leadership and dedication and your understanding, and your heartstrings that you certainly extend to a lot of people, and the, and the vision and compassion and goal that you bring to people and understand in a very difficult situation where they can and what they can do to help themselves and help their families. And certainly, your direction has made a very positive difference in the life of our town, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Moving then to item number 11, which is Resolution 13-71-R, O'Brien Facade Grant. Alderman Brown, do you have this?
I do, Your Honor, thank you. This did come to Community Development, the Joint Committee meeting last week, and this is for a, a grant to put on the awnings on the front of the building that the O'Briens own. And we did discuss it, and it does meet all the criteria, meets all the requirements of the plan. The amount is $2,350 that they're applying for, that they are eligible for. So I would move for approval of Resolution 13-71-R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of Resolution 13-71-R. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Resolution 13-71-R is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving then to item number 12, which is Resolution 13-78-R, Authorized Budget Amendment for the Funding of the Deer Path Road Bridge. Alderman Wolf, do you have this under City Services?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think we'll go through and just talk about the, the next three resolutions, and then we'll make resolutions one at a time. This is basically for the rebuilding of the Deer Path Road Bridge, and in going through the federal funding on this, the 80/20 split, we had to change, or we decided to change a few things in the layout of the bridge and the sidewalks to it and from it, and bike path adjacent to that. So we would be changing the, the funding on it, and it requires a budget amendment for this year on the funding side of it for the, the split between the state and federal participation on this. So the first resolution that I'll make on this would be 13-78-R, authorizing a budget amendment for the funding of the Deer Path Road Bridge. Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien, for the approval of Resolution 13-78-R, Budget Amendment for Funding of the Deer Path Road Bridge. Any discussion?
I wanted to get the dollar amount to add into there. I gotta find it. Of course, I can't read it on here now. I don't have the dollar. It was about $19,000 was the additional.
Eighteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Resolution 13-78-R is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to item number 13, which is Resolution 13-80-R, Authorizing Execution of a Local Agency Agreement Amendment Number One with, for federal participation for the Deer Path Road Bridge Widening and Rehabilitation Project with Civil Tech Engineering. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the actual agreement that's with Civil Tech on the engineering side of it for the Design Engineering Services Agreement, the additional changes to it. Any questions on that? Okay, then I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 30-80-R, Authorizing Execution of the Design Engineering Services Agreement, Supplement Number One for Federal Participation for the Deer Path Road Bridge Widening and Rehabilitation with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of Resolution 30-80-R, Authorizing Execution of Local Agreement, Agency Agreement Amendment Number One for Federal Participation for the Deer Path Road Bridge Widening and Rehabilitation with Civil Tech Engineering. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Resolution 13-80-R is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to item number 13, which is Resolution 13-80-R, Authorizing Execution of a Local Agency Agreement Amendment Number One for Federal Participation for the Deer Path Road Bridge Widening and Rehabilitation with Civil Tech Engineering. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Real quick question, do we have to do this again if we were to do it the second day, or does this cover a backup? Rain date?
It's a backup, as I understand it, so. Yeah, because we wouldn't have enough time to have a meeting for the next night to do it on the fifth. Okay, just by way of explanation, under 15A and 15B, which we added as part of the agenda, we have two pending applications for 24-hour Class F liquor licenses in the city of Batavia, and both of them are publicly kind of sponsored, have a publicly sponsored relationship. The first one is for this coming Sunday morning, we have the Batavia Triathlon, which I'd encourage everybody to come on down and participate, not, maybe not participate in, but certainly witness. It is a great crowd gatherer for downtown Batavia. We have, does anybody know, what's our number up, are we up to on participants? Is it 2,000 that we have? There's a lot of people come to this. It's, it's a huge crowd. And it brings a big, you know, Alderman, Clark?
Well, that's approximately...
About 2,000 people.
Yeah, I don't know what the final numbers are, but we can only accommodate, there's triathletes and duathletes, so combined, you're about right.
Yeah, we only have so much space and so much area.
Well, we have to get across Randall Road by a certain time, so we have to limit our participation because of that. It's still a good crowd.
Right, it's a great crowd. But anyway, they will be here this coming Sunday morning, and after it's over with, I guess it's kind of a tradition that we give them a beer if they want to have one.
They get one free beer, yes.
One free beer. And so, our, the city's insurance company, as they came through and, and look at the activities that we participate in and the things that we do, they have suggested to us that, number one, because we are helping sponsor this thing, and that we're quote-unquote they have suggested to us that number one, because we are helping sponsor this thing and that we're quote unquote giving the beer away to these participants, it probably would behoove us, number one, to issue ourselves a license. And secondly, that we insure this thing with a dram shop policy for the period of time that it's in place and the costs of which are being covered by the race event itself. So there's no taxpayer money being spent on it. But I just want everybody to understand why we are having to ask for you to do this. This is, I believe, the first year we've had to do it this way. And so again, Alderman Clark has been, along with Noel Basquelin, has been kind of in the leadership of this thing for a number, ten years.
Ten years. It's our tenth year.
Yeah, and it's been a really successful event that showcases downtown Batavia and the rest of the community to some, you know, lesser degree, but certainly downtown is a center point of this thing and I'm very proud of what they've been able to do. So I would encourage your endorsement of the license. And another thing I would ask is that we're, in both of these, that we will waive the fee of, which is fifty dollars for the twenty-four hour license. And the council has the power to waive the fee if they so desire. So I'd ask for somebody to make a motion for the approval of the Class F for the triathlon and for the waiver of the fee of the license.
So moved on both of those items. Second.
Okay, move by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the Class F for the triathlon waiving the fee. Kirk call the roll.
Clark.
Aye.
Atak.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassillion.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, item fifteen B is another request for a Class F liquor license. And this one would go to the Batavia Fireworks Committee as part of a fundraising event that they are proposing to host on Thursday evening, July thirteenth.
June thirteenth.
What?
June thirteenth.
Let me excuse, I say July, June thirteenth, thank you for correcting me. And it's going to be a kind of a little party that you're buying a ticket for and they will provide liquor and, or some drinks and food. It's going to be held out at Kay Hollis Jewelry Store. And they're going to try to, is it two hundred tickets you're selling or something? And they, they hope to raise some significant amount of money with this and they've gotten pretty good response to it. And again, we do have some access funds that we can pay for the dram shop insurance for this event out of that. So again, we won't be using any taxpayer money to buy liquor license fees for this thing. And again, I'd ask for approval of it with the waiver of the fifty dollar fee for the liquor license because it's, all the money is going to the Batavia Fireworks once the fundraiser is held.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Clark for the approval of the Class F for the Batavia Fireworks Fund for Thursday, June thirteenth, for their fundraiser. Any discussion?
Excuse me, just out of curiosity, I'm all for and in support of, what is the cost of a dram shop insurance for a one day?
Depends on, it depends on the number of participants you have. So the, the triathlon, I think it's going to be a little bit more than this one would be because this is like maybe two hundred people and the other one is two thousand people. So there may, but I think in round numbers. Hey, isn't a triathlon about three fifty? The triathlon is, and we're just getting the vote for the one for the fireworks, so.
And Nick, the, his, there was money left over from the original access committee and it's in the access committee's checking account and that's what's paying for the dram shop insurance. The city's not, doesn't have anything to do with that. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that the city's not paying for our dram shop license.
We're not, we're not, in either one of these, we're not asking any taxpayer money.
I'll pitch in, I just was curious.
Fortunately, the racing committee has their fund and this one has the access residual to depend on, which is private, you know, money that's been raised over the years. Any other discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassillion.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Atak.
Aye.
Motion is approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, I don't know if it's good news or bad news, but we have no administrator's report tonight. The administrator went to the Batavia Chamber of Commerce's golf outing this afternoon. And they're having a dinner afterwards and he had paid for the dinner, so he called me about seven o'clock and said, is it okay if I skip the meeting tonight? Because we're just getting in and the dinner's just starting. And so I, he said anything he needed to tell you, he'll impart it on you tomorrow night. So that's what we'll pass on that. So going to seventeen, committee reports, Community Development, Alderman Brown.
Only a few items to announce, your honor. The joint committee meeting tomorrow night, we've got a joint conversation between Community Development and City Services on the TIF Enterprise Fund Cost Breakdown in the Wilson Street, Streetscape. The only other couple items I have is HPC is going to meet, it's not on our calendar, but they will be meeting June tenth at five thirty. There's four or five different items on that agenda, which are all certificate of appropriateness agenda items. And then June eleventh, the joint committee of a whole, again, a few items we have will be, for the CDC, will be city properties. We're going to be going over kind of a rundown of what city properties we have. Comprehensive plan update, annexation of Carlisle Road pedestrian path. And tentatively, we've got the plat of McKee Street dedication adjacent to the Siemens property. That was a piece of property that Alderman Homan just sent an email out the other day in questioning, should there be some sidewalks along McKee Street area there with close proximity to the school? And, and so this is a kind of a feedback on that, something staff has been working on and we're getting closer. So I have.
Any questions of Alderman Brown? Public Utilities, Alderman Clark.
For tomorrow night's meeting, we just have, there was a memo put out about the new NIPA Board Representatives. And then on the eleventh, there's going to be just some discussion on the wastewater treatment plant project and city signs. Other than the public utilities, I don't know why city signs is under public utilities, I'm not sure what that's about, but we'll find out on the eleventh, I guess. That's all I have, thanks.
City Services, Alderman Wolf.
The only thing I see on tomorrow night's agenda is ordinance thirteen twenty-eight, intergovernmental agreement with Aurora Township referencing the safety trailer.
Okay, Government Services, Alderman Sparks.
Thank you. For tomorrow night, we have resolution thirteen eighty-three R, the intergovernmental agreement for King County Animal Control Contract. Resolution thirteen eighty-four R, adopt the vision statement and approve the deputy city clerk appointment. That's all we have for tomorrow, thank you.
Okay, moving to eighteen, other business, does anybody have any other business? Alderman Stark.
I would of course like to talk about the fireworks, I only have two more opportunities before the Fourth of July, or maybe three. The event that the mayor alluded to is called Keep It Sparkling. It's on June thirteenth from six to eight P M. at Kay Hollis Jewelers and it's to make, to help raise money for the sixty-third annual Sky Concert. The cost is twenty dollars for the entry fee if it's paid online via PayPal on our website at bataviafireworks.org. Or you can buy your ticket in person in Kay Hollis Jeweler, it, or it's twenty-five dollars at the door the evening of the event. Kay Hollis is located at one forty-seven South Randall, which is in the Julasco Shopping Center, just to the south of Julasco. The attire is red, white and blue. We started out as a little black dress event for the women, of course, or men, it's really up to you. But we've expanded it to red, white and blue kind of dressy. There's going to be food and beverages. We've had some great donations from the various liquor stores in town, so there'll be wine. There'll be silent auction items. We have a five dollar purchase of a glowing ring that's your entry into a custom made piece of jewelry that designed by Kay Hollis. The shopping hours are going to be the same as if Kay Hollis were open to the public that night. There'll be live music and we're also going to have sampling from local restaurants. We've had several of the restaurants in town donate food for the evening too. So we're very excited, this is the first time we've tried this and we're hoping to sell two hundred tickets, raise four thousand dollars for the fireworks. So I hope that you can all come. On, in that vein, people ask me regularly how we're doing in terms of fireworks money. We just crossed over twenty-four thousand dollars in corporate sponsorship, which is huge. This is the most we've ever had in corporate sponsorship. We have recently gotten donations from Suncast and the Batavia Triathlon and the Batavia Race where they run on the streets.
Oh, the half marathon.
The half marathon, thank you. And which is, those are new sponsors for us this year, we're very excited about that. We also have a lot of buttons left to sell, so anytime you see any of the fireworks people, you know, remind them to sell you a button at two dollars. And we are going to have tables at the Farmer's Market. We'll be collecting money at the Farmer's Market on Saturday mornings. And we'll also be having a table at the River Rhapsody concerts on Wednesday night. So we're going to give everyone in town a lot of opportunities to hand over some cash for the fireworks and have a terrific Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to pick up on what Alderman Stark has just shared with you and share with you just a little bit more about how significant and unique this particular event is to Batavia. I'm not going to name them because I think that would be unfair, but in the last ten days, I have been called here at the office by two of my fellow peers, other mayors in the Chicagoland area who were curious to know as to how Batavia was paying for this big, what one described as, what he was told was this lavish fireworks program that you put on. And I said, well, it's all by donation. And the mayor's response was, you've got to be kidding me. And I says, no, I said, we've been doing this now for sixty-three years. This will be the sixty-third year and we've never gone into the taxpayers' pocket to pay for any of the fireworks. And I mean, that is, in some respects, I think in the eyes of a lot of people, quite a remarkable feat that we've been able to raise the money always through community support and donation. And I, you hear me hark in the prayer and other places about the, the great vitality of volunteerism and support, community support that we enjoy in Batavia. And I think this is one of the classic examples of it that repeats itself year after year after year. And there has been times over the years when, as has already been alluded to, we get out there on Fourth of July and then suddenly Esda's pulling on my shoulder saying, hey, we just looked at the radar and there's this huge storm that's going to be here just at the time you're going to fire off the fireworks. And I can remember, I don't know when it was, maybe fifteen years ago, one night it happened and we had one heck of a storm and we announced that we were going to have to cancel the show for the night right before it started. We'd shoot it the next night if it possible, but we asked everybody to orderly get themselves off the field. And it was remarkable how those thousands of people that had gathered out there quietly did it. We opened the doors of the old fire station across the street there on Main Street and pulled the trucks out on the ramp and a bunch of people ran into the building and who were parked too far away to make it back to their car. And we were successful, nobody got hurt. It was, you know, quite a rowing situation, but we were able to successfully handle it. But going back to this thing about the community raising up its support for this, this is always remarkable to me that this is when we find the heart and soul of Batavia and I'm just very proud of our record in being able to do this. Yesterday, I participated with the Batavia Park District in the rededication of the Memorial Field Park over on Illinois Avenue. And I, they asked me to speak a little bit about the history of it. And as I stood there and looked at it, it suddenly dawned on me that from nineteen forty, or nineteen fifty, when we began the fireworks till through nineteen seventy-one, twenty-one years, we fired that fireworks program off at Memorial Field on Illinois Avenue. And it looked so small yesterday as I stood there and looked at what we were doing there. And, you know, it was, but it, again, I suppose spoke to the size of Batavia at the time. Our population was six or seven thousand people and today we have, you know, twenty-six thousand. But, that being said, it just speaks to the kind of the history of this thing and kind of how it's followed its growth. But this remarkable feat of being able to pay for it every year with donations, I think really is a pat on the back to all of Batavia and something that hopefully future generations will strive to continue to carry forth because it really, you know, as I say, I have other towns now calling me up saying, how do you do this? What is the secret? How, well, how are we, how are you able to do it? You know, I, one that talked to me had a fireworks program last year and because of the drought, they canceled it. And now they're trying to think about bringing it back, but it's kind of too late. And so they're thinking about what they could do for next year, not this year, but next year. So I shared with them some of the ideas that we have put out, but we have, I think, something very special going here and I just hope that all of you can attend it on the Fourth of July. And it's the one time of the year that I will tell you that we really bring together, the vast majority of the people in town are at one place together for one common event. And there's no other event during the year that generates the size of the crowd that we do. The police have historically always told me, you, we, the community, create for ourselves the biggest traffic jam of the year following that event. And so we, I think, have something special going here and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank the fireworks committee and all those who have worked so hard to bring this together. And I think we've at least made sure we got the money to pay for this year's show and hopefully we'll be on the way to start to pay for next year's after this year's show is over with.
We're at probably close to thirty thousand dollars. So we have enough money to pay for the fireworks and we haven't had to scale back too much. We've stretched out a few songs, but we're, we're on par with previous years. Two things I did forget to mention though, is we do need food vendors. I have rounded up the funnel cake person, I have the cheese curd, fried cheese curd guy coming. So I, the fried doughnut guy can't make it. I hit a theme when I was looking for vendors, anything deep fried was good for the fireworks. So if anyone who's watching and knows a food vendor that they would like to participate, they can call me or email me. My information's on the city website. And then the second thing, we always need volunteers to help us at any, for any different event. And so anyone who's interested in being on the fireworks committee, there are ten of us who raise all of this money every year and do all these events. And so if anyone's really interested in being on the fireworks committee, again, you can contact me via the city email. So, but that said, we're off to a good start, we're going to have a great fireworks.
I would just like to bring up one other point, that the restaurant community has been very supportive this year. And if you go to bataviafireworks.org and print out a flyer for the restaurants that are having specials that if you eat there on certain days, they're donating a percentage of that. This, starting tomorrow, it's at Limestone for the fourth, fifth and sixth. Week after that is Bulldogs, week after that is Open Range and then Gibby's Wine Den on the twenty-sixth.
Alderman Sparks?
Yeah, I've got an announcement, I'm putting on my Lions hat. Batavia Lions Club has their annual Guide Dog Golf Classic this Saturday, June eighth. The proceeds, what they do is they help support the Guide Dog Foundation's training and placement of a guide dog with a visually impaired person. It also supports our local vision related programs. It's at Fox Valley Golf Course on Route twenty-five in Batavia. The registration and check in is seven A M. And the tee time start at eight o'clock, it'll be a shotgun start. It's ninety dollars per golfer for admission. And what it includes is eighteen holes of challenging golf with a cart, a rewarding, rewarding the best blind drive contest, lunch on the course and a steak dinner at the Batavia Moose Lodge afterwards. There'll be prizes and raffles available. If there's any questions, contact Lion Don Murphy, who's out in the audience, at six three oh eight seven nine one oh five six. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Not.
Alderman Wolf?
I forgot to mention tonight and I just pulled it up again. Everybody needs to be aware that the residential refuse recycling and yard waste collection plan changes begin on July first. Refer to the city website, but basically the pickup collection days change to Wednesday for the areas between Randall Road and Kirk Road from Wilson Street to the south. Note that both north and south sides of Wilson Street will be collected on Wednesday. And then on Thursday, between Randall Road and Kirk Road north of Wilson Street. And then on Friday is everything west of Randall Road from Fabian Parkway to the southern city limits. Just want to make sure I get that in, I'm going to keep going on that each, each and every week so everybody knows that that's the changes that are there. And any changes you'd like in size on either the recycling carts or a garbage cart, you can call Advanced Disposal at six three oh five eight seven eight two eight two. Or on the website, you can request the changes on the website. And they'll, they should be coming out soon to change those out. So I wanted everybody to know that that is something we have to be ready for.
Okay.
One more.
One more?
Yeah, I have to put my B A TV hat on now. B A TV had a monumental, first ever broadcast on every channel from a remote location when they did the live broadcast of the class of twenty thirteen graduation from NIU last weekend, last Friday. Everything went pretty good, other than one crash, everything went, went great on the website and on all the channels. And the DVD copy of that is available if anyone wants to keep say a copy of it, it's twenty dollars. And that's the full four camera shoot of graduation. It was also the first time B A TV was on a Jumbotron in a, in an away setting. At the communication center, they actually used the feed that we had down on the floor, watching all the graduates come across the floor on their Jumbotron. So no matter where you were sitting in the, the communication center, you could see the kids as they went across the stage. So really quite an interesting broadcast. I was not out there, I do have to give kudos to John for all of his technical work to get that to work. They were not able to go into NIU until the day of graduation to set everything up, so they had no pre tests or anything set up for it. So it was a technical marvel to get all that set up and done in one day. Also Jen and Holly and then Board President Jim Dillenberg was also there to help with filming. Quite an interesting, and congratulations to the class of twenty thirteen.
Matters from the public. All right. I'll close then on what I hopefully you will consider to be a good note. As many of you have probably known for a number of years, ever since about two thousand eight, two thousand and nine, the real estate market in the entire Midwest, probably most of the country, has kind of slowed down and shut down and there hasn't been any activities of any major magnitude. As many of the old timers on the council will remember, there were years past when we would show new housing permits issued in the community of Batavia where we would do, three or four hundred new houses were being built in the city of Batavia. And I believe last year, we had twelve was it last year? So it, things have greatly, greatly slowed down here for the last few years. I was meeting, or with some fellow Realtors last week and we did a little exploration because there seems to be some changes in the wind taking place in the real estate market as it applies to Batavia. And I just thought I'd kind of share this with you. Last week, if you kind of checked the records that were available, there was, and the number is somewhat fluid because it changes because houses get bought and they close and they get taken on the market, off the market and new listings get thrown on. But in round numbers, there was, last week, there was a little bit more than two hundred and forty houses for sale in the community of Batavia, either single families or townhouses or attached housing, residential housing now I'm talking about. There was in round numbers a little bit more than two hundred and forty. But the interesting component to that was that of the two hundred and forty, it appeared that over forty percent of those were in some form or fashion in contract negotiations, which was, you know, a really high number. I mean, we have not seen that type of activity in Batavia in the last five years of any magnitude. So I would just kind of, everybody that's got a ward here, and you all do, just kind of alert you. It appears, and this is not a situation, this is citywide, there's not like one neighborhood that's selling a lot more than others. It's pretty well divided up from everything I can see and tell, that there is, you know, seemingly a lot of new people about to move into this town. I mean, or they're moving from where they live someplace else to a new address and putting their old house up for sale or somebody else is moving into that. So I'm not sure yet what's happening, but it's a, it's a different time than what we've had in the last few years. And it's just started to emerge, they always say in the real estate market that the market for the year kicks in kind of the Sunday after the Super Bowl. And that seems to be in the case in Batavia, all of a sudden things started popping and a lot of people are showing up here. And I am talking to other Realtors, many of them are telling me, yeah, there's some internal folks in town that want to, but there's a lot of new people that are showing up on the doorsteps of Batavia wanting to look at the, at the community and have kind of eyed us or targeted us as a place that they would like to move their families to. And, you know, there's probably a lot of different reasons for that, but the one and one that seems to be the most repeated theme is I'd like to get into the school system. And there's, there seems to be some recognition of appreciation. And there's, there seems to be some recognition of appreciation for what's happening in the Batavia school system from a positive vein about test scores and testing and whatever have you, what's going on. So, you know, I think the school district better be ready for some enrollment increases come next September because it looks like if you've already got forty percent of what we have on the market already in contract, you're going to have a bunch of new folks potentially moving in here. And I assume many of them are going to bring families with them. So, I, you know, I think that's relatively good news for the community. It's showing that things are starting to percolate and bubble and come back and things are going to start to, and I would think that that, those types of numbers would also, and one thing I think collectively we all kind of support is, you know, draw the interest of businesses that may say, "Well, gee, now's the time, maybe I should be looking at moving my business, expanding into Batavia or downtown Batavia and come in and do some stuff." So I think those are kind of sell, sellable numbers that we can kind of tout and share with folks that are stuff that, you know, "Hey, Batavia's kind of starting to get on the move again." And Jeff, how many houses have we issued this year? Do you remember off the top of your head?
Only two so far this year, which is on track with last year.
Yeah.
We had several others written, kind of works.
Yeah, but the, the new housing, building the new house hasn't come back yet. And I don't think, and talking to other mayors, nobody else seems to be seeing that either. But certainly the, the existing housing inventory is under high interest and appeal from a whole bunch of people. And it's interesting to look at the, specifically the housing that is in the kind of the lower price range is real popular right now. There's a lot of people, and I don't know so much if that, if it's new buyers or it's the rehab market wanting to come in and be a step, couple steps ahead of everybody else and refurb it and then resell it or whatever, but a lot of real estate's moving. And so it's just an interesting time. So, Alderman Brown, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move we adjourn the city council meeting.
They have a motion and a second. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.